...to call the role of council attendance by introducing each of the members to you. I'm Dan Pugh, certainly my pleasure and honor to be the mayor of Lewisville. To my immediate right is our mayor pro tem Sandra Mott, followed by councilman Ed Smith and councilman Jeff Singer. To my left is councilman Robert Green, councilman Mike Horn, and councilman Dr. Kim Sadler, who's unable to be with us tonight. We have our staff in attendance. Hank Perkins is our town manager. We have our town attorney, Mr. Bill Howe. Our town clerk is Ms. Joyce Walker. And our assistant town manager and finance director is Kathy Bruce. A couple of other members of our staff in the back. Mr. Martin Myers, our town planner. George Howser, our public works director. Also, we'd like to recognize the press that's with us tonight. Elizabeth, thank you for being with us also. We've got a special presentation to follow shortly, but we do have some special, very special guests with us tonight. Commissioner Mark Baker, thank you for being here. We have Senator Joyce Craywick that's with us tonight. Our representative of the 79th district is Representative Julia Howard. And then, of course, we have our guest monor, former Senator Pete Brumstad, who's with us tonight also. So, thank you all for being in attendance. Council, we have the agenda before you. I don't think there's been any additions since it was set at our briefing session, has it, Ms. Walker?
As we did at briefing, we were waiting on the contract information, and that has been added for.
Oh, okay. I might add to those in the audience, there are copies of the agenda on the table at the rear of the chambers, if you'd like to follow along. So, have the agenda before you, council. What is your pleasure for tonight?
Would you for adoption?
All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, the like sign. Okay, we do have an agenda we'll follow, and we'll ask our manager to lead us through the consent agenda.
Okay, the first one... The consent agenda is the Resolution 2014008, Acceptance and Approval of Monthly Financials for January 2014. Next, the approval of council briefing and action minutes from February 6, 2014. Next is the approval of council meeting minutes from February 18, 2014. Followed by approval of council closed session minutes from February 18, 2014. The next item is Resolution 2014009, accepting the resignation of William Lorenz from the Lewisville Zoning Board of Adjustment. The next item is Resolution 2014010, the disposition of members from the Lewisville Recycling Committee. And next is Resolution 2014011, accepting the resignation of Terry Powell from the Lewisville Recycling Committee. Next is Resolution 2014012, the disposition of John Litka from the Lewisville Phase 2 Stormwater and Education Committee. And lastly, Resolution 2014013, accepting the resignation of Percy Phillips for Parks and Recreation and Cultural Development Board.
Council, are there any questions of the manager of any of the items that are on the consent agenda?
Move approval of consent agenda.
I have a second. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, the like sign. Okay, the consent agenda passes.
The next section is Section 3 for Presentations, Introductions, and/or Proclamations. Under Proclamations, we do have two this evening. The first is Proclamation 2014002 for MS Awareness Week from March 3 through the 9 of 2014.
Both of these proclamations that we have on the agenda tonight are reoccurring on an annual basis, proclamations for a specific cause that they represent. The first of which is for the Multiple Sclerosis Awareness Week. And the second is the American Red Cross Month designated as March of 2014. Do I need to go over any of the details of that? I think it's the same as in past years, if I'm not mistaken. But if not, will we hereby proclaim that for the Multiple Sclerosis Awareness Week, that March 24 through 30 of 2014, as Multiple Sclerosis Awareness Week, and commend this observance to all of our citizens. The second one is the American Red Cross Month. Same as before, it's a reoccurring, annual proclamation that we make in designating the month of March of each year as American Red Cross Month. I think we're all familiar with the Red Cross Organization. They're there in time of need for all citizens. They certainly are here in our community. We have people that serve on the various activities of the Red Cross, and they not only work in our community, but work throughout the other communities and across the states as well. So, we do, therefore, we dedicate the month of March to all of those who support the American Red Cross mission to prevent and alleviate human suffering in the face of emergencies, and hereby proclaim March 2014 as American Red Cross Month. Would you like to add anything to those two proclamations? Okay, we'll go on to the next item.
Next section are introductions. There are none this evening. And then, that brings us to Section C of Number 3 for Presentations.
I'll come to the center of the matter and ask Pete Brumstad if you would come forward also. First off, Pete, thank you for being with us tonight. Thank you for your service. I'd like to share just a few things about Pete's background and the things that he has done for not just our town, but for our county and for our state. You may not know that Pete was born in San Francisco. I think your parents originally were from the New York, New Jersey area and moved to San Francisco. He lived in California until the age of 16. Some of the rumors have it that you found from time to time hanging out in the Pete Ashbury District. I don't know if that's true or not, but that was at least a rumor.
Glad this is only coming up now.
Yeah. But I guess the big question is, did he have long hair during that period? No way. Pete, with his family, moved to Louisiana at the age of 16. Or about to move to Louisiana, was it?
New Orleans.
In New Orleans, okay. Well, that makes sense. He attended Tulane University for his undergraduate degree and earned his Juris Doctorate from the University of Virginia. From 1977 until 1981, he was commissioned officer in the US Navy, served aboard the USS Frisco. He left active duty as a lieutenant, and from 1981 until 1990, he served in the Navy Reserves. He left that with the rank of Lieutenant Commander. Hope I've got all this right. Well, your wife's a very valuable story.
Now I know why she didn't want him.
It's not going to really be on our... But after law school, I think your first job was with a firm in, was it in the Richmond area of Virginia? And later, you joined what was then, I think, Petrie Stockton Law Firm here in our area, and moved to Wongo Carlisle and practiced there until very recently. Okay, we'll get this good so far. Pete and his wife, Jody, have three sons and a daughter. All three of the sons have served in the military. Was it Daniel that was actually wounded?
Tim.
Timothy was actually wounded in Iraq. Their daughter Rebecca is a playwright, or works as a playwright, in the New York area, and currently, she is in California riding for a TV show. It is good information we've got somewhere. Do you remember the show that she worked...
It's Switch to Birth, ABC Family, Monday nights.
All right, great. Another little tidbit of information that you may not know about Pete is he's a motorcycle enthusiast. And I've been in meetings with him, or he came to the meet on his motorcycle, so I don't think he misses an opportunity to get out and ride. I'm not for sure what the hog is, but what's...
It's a Harley.
Harley, okay. Is it called, is correct. And I think also, and I wasn't aware of this at all, was that you're an inspiring pilot and working on, what rating are you working on now?
Multi-engine instrument, I would regard.
Oh, my goodness. Well, praise. Well, Pete began his public service serving as chairman of the Forsyth County Board of Elections from 1992 to 91. And then, he was appointed to fill a vacancy on the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners. He was reelected in 92, 96, and 2000. And he also served as chair of that board from 1994 through 2000. In 2004, he chose not to seek reelection, but in 2006, was appointed to the North Carolina Senate to fill the vacancy that treated by the death of Senator Al Portman at that time. He served in the North Carolina General Assembly, representing the state's 31st district, until he resigned in 2013 to become executive vice president and chief legal counsel for Winston-Salem Basin of Montail. He actually, I think you had served on the first Board of Trustees of Montail for about 10 years, three of which you were chair of, or equal. This just goes on and on and on. When Senator Brumstad served in the Senate, the state senate, as the Senate's co-chair of the Appropriations Based Budget Committee, chairman of the State Judiciary Committee, vice chair of the Committees of Rules and Operations of the Senate, and was a member of the Finance, Commerce, and Redistricting Committee. He currently is an adjunct professor of law at Elon University School of Law, and serves on the Gordon Pfisters of the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill.
I dismantle the basketball program.
Okay. Pete, certainly we thank you for your service to the state, to our county, and to our town. You've been a personal friend and a friend to the town, for sure. You've been a wise counsel when we needed it the most, and I appreciate all of that from you. I would like to read the certificate. As you've seen, there's so much in his background, we couldn't get it all on, so we had to abbreviate the certificate. But it states, "The certificate of appreciation presented to Peter Pete S. Brumstad in recognition of service and contributions to the state of North Carolina, Forsyth County, and the town of Lewisville." Pete, thank you so much for your service.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Best of luck to you. (applause) For the officers...
I'm good anymore.
But any member of council would like to say your word, Pete, or any additional comments from council?
(whistle) (laughter) Some of our esteemed speakers certainly would give you the opportunity, if you'd like, anyone to say a few words about Pete at this time?
Mayor, I'm not going to say anything, but we would very appreciate it. It was, has been a pleasure to work with Pete, and he's been a very strong appropriations chairman, and also served on the Finance Committee. And he's a gentleman and a pleasure to work with, and I'm glad to have Joyce, but he's a little miss. And we appreciate all the hours that he's put in to help us with budget issues in the way. We'll miss you, Pete.
Well, I'm sure of one thing, Pete, going from the state senate and certainly as chair of those so important committees, certainly the level at your new position with Montail Health is equal to that, for sure. But I doubt seriously if you're going to spend a number of hours...
It'd be hard pressed.
But we do, we thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
What we'll do at this time, we'll recess our meeting. We have some refreshments, and we'd like for you to take with that, and then we will return a little bit later on that.
Thank you all.
It's our pleasure. So, you go first, if you would. We'll call the meeting back to order, and go to the next item of business, please.
The next section is bringing us to public forum.
This is the first of two opportunities that we have in each of our council meetings for the public to address council on any subject. Could be something on tonight's agenda, it could be something that is not on the agenda, but that you would want to make reference to, to the council. Our rules are that we ask that you come forward to the microphone and podium, that you state your name and your address, and that you limit your comments to three minutes. The nature of this is that we are here to listen. We won't get in discussion or actually even have dialogue on the issue that you bring forward. Doesn't mean that we don't pay attention to it, and we don't do diligence in working on it, but we don't use this time for discussion. Do we have anyone? I don't have anyone that's signed up for the public forum, but is anyone in the audience that would like to address council at this time? Okay, we will close the public forum, and we do have comment, written forms at the back, or forms that say for written comments, if you would like to use that method. So, we'll go to the next item.
The next section is Section 5 for purchases, and there are none this evening for consideration. Brings us to B, under the same section, for contracts. We do have Resolution 2014014 approving contract for Yankin Valley paving in an amount of And that is to repair, pave various roads, Pete, Ben Willow Drive, Saskatoon Lane, Grinnell Street, Leatherwood Court, Smoke Tree Circle, and Smoke Tree Court.
Is this contract limited to those particular streets that have been identified?
Yes, sir. Public Works Director George Howser is here with us this evening, but the list had to be cut down to make it fit within budget.
Okay. Council, have any questions concerning the resolution for the paving contract?
Move approval of contract. Sir.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, the like sign. Resolution 2014014 passes. Next item.
Okay, the next section is Section 6 for board and committee appointments. And the A is the boards. We have material for Parks Recreation and Cultural Development. We do have someone that has applied since the last time we met, but they have not been introduced and interviewed yet, so we'll have them for consideration for next month's meeting. And then, following that, we have Select 2 for planning, Select 1 for MSD at large, Select 5, I'm sorry, for District 5, Select 1. And then, for Zoning Board of Adjustment, we have Select 3. And then, on alternate members, we have 1 for selection this evening.
Ms. Walker, are you going to lead us through this process?
I can, yes. For planning, are you all looking at your spreads? For planning, we actually can vote for 2. Currently, we have sitting Kathryn Taylor Heath. We've had 2 applications, Michael Prince and Vettel Seeler. And given that, we have no paper. So, how are we going to do this? Would you all like paper, or how would you like to...
You mean we don't have ballots, is that what you're saying?
Yes, yeah. I guess I was so busy this afternoon, they were upstairs.
Can we take our paper agendas and circle?
Sure.
Pull it out and sign it?
Sure. Can you do that with all of them, and I'll just tabulate?
Yes, ma'am, if that's okay.
Certainly, you may. I mean, you've adopted a certain policy, I don't know how formalized it is, but you've continued to use it. But in reality, there's no requirement of vote or anything along those lines. Someone can make a motion to it. I'll let you know if there's something that is problematic, but thus far, there's not, as long as ultimately, those, if your agendas are going to need to be turned in, so they'll have it written, the writing.
Can we just tear this page out and...
Do you have extra pages?
You can take a sheet of paper and write for each, for each one, because we're on planning board now. Just put...
What I was going to say was, let me just read them all, and if you want to just circle each one for what we have to go on, and then put your name on it, because it's on your agenda.
I drew all of them. You're okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
One challenge I see with that is that there's one individual who, depending on how he is received for the planning board, also appears again for consideration of another position, and I would like to know how he would fare in the planning board before I go on to the other.
Good observation. Yeah, we should, really, just go ahead and complete the ballot on the planning board, make that selection, and then we can go to the others, case that individual is removed or continued. She wants to just vote for planning?
Just planning board, now.
I probably want to write planning boards, the 2 that you select, and at least your initial, your initial role.
Yes.
the service district 5, there's one vacancy for each of those, and there's only one candidate for each. I propose that we do that by acclamation. Do you have a second? All in favor?
All right. Those 2, Mr. Glenn, you are now selected for the at-large district and the Little Ron Municipal Service District. And for service district 5, it's Mr. Edward Rafflin. Takes us into the zoning board of adjustment.
Well, again, we can't wait for it there. Yeah. Tell me if you're trying.
It seems that we have Kathryn Heath and Michael Prince. And of course, in your minutes for tonight, you'll see the actual voting. Excuse me, I heard that the mayor made the acclamation for, who's second?
Abbott. Abbott will speak. So, once again, we're to select 3 candidates, and for department members of the zoning board adjustment, because that same individual names appear as an alternate.
As an alternate also, and if you recall, when you look at your voting sheets on your iPad, you will remember that Mr. Harmon was an alternate, but he's agreed that he will move to a permanent position if so decided. will move to a permanent position if he's so decided. Okay, we have Scott Ayers, Rick Herman, and Nathan Ziegler. So that means that Mr., that means that Mr. Ziegler, Ziegler will not be available to run for the alternate. And that leaves only Mr. Neelins.
Who we're calling, Mr. Neelins by unanimous acclamation to the zoning board of adjustment alternates. Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And that brings us to the other committees.
The other committees, these are all appointment orders. First is appointment order two zero one four zero zero one for the beautification committee.
What, what's listed you talk about?
Yes, sir.
Yep, okay. What's pleasure of council for appointment order two thousand and fourteen zero zero one?
You don't have a financial interest in this, because there's not a financial interest in any gain from participation in the beautification.
Just ask.
Are we to ask and the answer's, you're okay.
Motion approved.
All right. And a second? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that order passes. Appointment order two thousand and fourteen zero zero two for the public safety advisory committee. Motion?
Motion approved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, public safety advisory committee, appointment order passes. Appointment order two thousand and fourteen zero zero three for the recycling committee.
Motion approved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That appointment order passes. And last is appointment order two thousand and fourteen zero zero four for the phase two storm water advisory and education committee.
Motion approved.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that order passes also. So that puts us standing for all of our committees and boards at this point in time.
Yes, sir. We're in the check.
Okay. Next item on business?
Next item on the agenda is item, or section number seven for old business. There is none for consideration. Moving on, section eight, public hearings, we do have one this evening. We have public hearings, you hear comments amending the Louisville Unified Development Ordinance, UDO L dash one four four, for the Louisville Rural Overlay, or otherwise the LRO District. First is the staff presentation.
Mr. Myers with us is going to give the staff presentation. Thank you, Marty.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Okay, this evening, we're here to talk about the amendments that we're proposing to make to the Louisville Rural Overlay. The Louisville Rural Overlay, as amended, or as to be amended, encourages the preservation of open space. It addresses the town's concerns for future loss of farmland and open space by the proliferation of segregated, single-use developments. Our fundamental policy is to create sustainable approaches to preserving the outlying areas' rural appearance. And to as great extent, that extent as possible, the productive agricultural use of this area by clustering residential development and creating high-quality neighborhoods and retaining important natural features, as described in our town's comprehensive plan. Emphasis will be given to planned residential developments that are by their nature more respectful of the existing geography by focusing grading and other land disturbing activities away from environmentally sensitive areas. This ordinance shall encourage the preservation of natural vistas and the rural character by the use of special use zoning and the careful attention to the approval and location of utility lines and other amenities. The LRO allows for the development of new neighborhoods in a rural residential setting that set aside natural vistas and landscape features for permanent conservation. The creation of usable open space is important as a component of this, this new ordinance. Development types associated with the rural district are farms, single-family residences, planned residential developments, as I said, and the standard residential or large lot subdivision neighborhoods. The PRD is the perverted development type within the rural district overlay. The LRO ordinance shall apply to all lands designated GMA five rural area within the town's corporate limits. Now, to do this, we had to amend a number of sections of the UDO, and then we did have one area of UDO, which was the LRO section, but as is the case with a lot of changes to ordinance, it, it spreads itself out and lends itself to changes to multiple sections. And what I proposed to do is to go through the ordinance as prepared and formatted by staff and just highlight some of those changes. The first one can be found, and I believe you have this copy of the ordinance in front of you, the first can be found in section two, to amend D two one point six F two and B two one six F three. Basically, that is the boundary section of the LRO. And previously, the LRO District said that it shall coincide with the boundaries of GMA five areas within the town of Louisville as they exist as of the effective date of the boundaries, or as they may be there and after amended. What we're doing there is to change that to read all lots within current future town limits designated as GMA five and shall constitute the LRO District. Not a very big amendment there, but one that's mightily important to establish the parameters and the extent where it will have effect. Section three, the LRO District requirements, what we're doing there is modifying paragraph I, basically taking out the condition that the LRO has previously written in two thousand and seven impacted lots of thirty acres or more, and specifically required that those acreages have a density of no more than one unit, or an average of one unit per three acres. So that's now being struck. Section four, we also tweak paragraph B, which refers to the development plan requirement and its submittal, and who would take a look at it and how. And as you can see there, the language in red is the end of the language that's being added to that paragraph, along with a couple of strikeouts. Section five, basically this paragraph or section establishes the PRD, or planned residential development, as the preferred development type within the revised LRO. The language you see there at the bottom of page two, beginning with the density of any residential development site or portion of development, that basically establishes that large lot and PRD are the standards to be followed as revised. Section six, for urban uses, what you see there is the strikeouts, private wastewater package treatment plants shall not be constructed or operated, that's being struck, and new language is being added to speak to the placement of future wastewater treatment plants as allowed. Section seven, the approval section, this is no longer, we're no longer at this point in the LRO section of the UDO, we're in the utility section of the UDO where it talks about the approval of new utilities. Paragraph A there, what we've done is tweak it to include additional language to specify sanitary sewer. We've changed out of some, some language, I think we've added the word utility, and we've also struck some language which relates to the amount and number of drawings that would need to be submitted in the, in the event that we receive an application for a new project within the LRO. Paragraphs D through E, those are new paragraphs, those basically establish that for future reference, any new development within the LRO, if it's to have a private or even public utility within it, the lines, the sewer lines specifically must meet the city-county utility standards for those utilities. It also speaks in paragraph D, which is a new paragraph, that, that all plans submitted to the town for their review and approval shall be certified by a licensed civil engineer, licensed in North Carolina, and that the sanitary sewer systems will comply with the most current Winston-Salem Preside County Utilities Commission standards. Section nine, we're amending a new section here, we've gone now to the minor subdivision section of the UDO, and we're basically deleting paragraph G, which states that within the GMA five, no block contained less than twenty thousand square feet, or the entire area of the subdivision is greater than thirty acres, I think I spoke to this a little while ago, that you should have an average of one unit per three acres, and it also speaks once again to package treatment plants. Section ten, we propose to amend chapter D, major subdivisions now, by deleting the paragraph related to public or private utilities, which once again speaks to the nature of package treatment plants within the GMA five area. Section eleven, still in major subdivisions, we're adding a new paragraph, which basically reinforces the need that all, all new utilities being proposed within new subdivisions shall meet or exceed the city-county utilities minimum standard. We also have a recommendation that, that very in there, that in order to reinforce the, the language that we've just proposed for amendment within the LRO and all the other sections of the UDO, that we needed the language within the comprehensive plan, which spoke to these things and enforced the, the goals that, that they put forth. And to do that, we're proposing a new paragraph, or actually a new sentence within the paragraph, which reads, "All lands within the Louisville Rural Overlay shall be eligible to receive both water and sewer services if the owner chooses to be annexed into the town of Louisville." Just putting that in there for clarification. That pretty much includes all of the, the changes that, that we feel are necessary to accomplish the goals that the planning board and this council has said that they'd like to see done in going back through and amending the UDO. We were at the town council briefing meeting last week, and understand that there were some concerns, and we're prepared to discuss those or answer any questions that you might have related to the information that I've shared with you this evening, or concerns that were presented last Thursday, so. Questions?
Any questions of the planet at this point in time before we go into the public hearing? Does it mean we've been calling back?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, we will open the public hearing for ordinance two thousand and fourteen zero one zero, on the, your comments amending the Louisville United Development Ordinance, UDO L one forty four, on this Louisville Rural Overlay or the LRO District. Like we do in our public forum, we ask that if there's anyone that wants to speak, pro or, or con against the, this particular ordinance, we ask you to come to the microphone, that you state your name, give your address, and please try to hold your comments to three minutes, if you would please. Is there anyone that would like to speak at this time to council on, on this, this
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. My name is Lang Wilcox, twelve ten Forest Wood Drive in Louisville, and as you all know, I've been kind of involved in this for a long time. It's hard to believe it's been seven years since the implementation of the original and highly restrictive LRO. It was a time Louisville had to make a hard decision and choose the defensive stance of discouraging development until you could get a seat at the table relating to water and sewer infrastructure. Unfortunately, that decision came at a cost. I recently found myself discussing statistics and demographics for Louisville with a national marketing consultant located out of Nashville, who specializes in providing commercial and residential builders and developers with strategic planning, and I became involved in the conversation because I had brought an associate to Louisville to look at making some investment here in the future, and to explain to him, join the town, and explain to him what the opportunities were taking shape in Louisville, especially with the potential of this new LRO language, and what opportunities lie, lay ahead here. His consultant asked me, what's, what's going on there? And continued, because I can't see any good reason to advise my clients to make an investment there. And his reason was, is that, and what he went on to say is that Louisville has had virtually nothing happen here in the seven years that we had to shut the town down to get a seat at the table. I obviously know better than that, and so I took the opportunity to move on into explaining the last seven years. That cost, as he went on to explain, was a stagnation in growth. Obviously, the Great Recession we've experienced obviously did not help these numbers, but little or no growth is simply little or no growth. No growth meant fewer people moved here. Fewer people meant fewer homes were needed, less business investment and failing or stagnant business growth. We've all seen people come and go in this town, good people with good business plans put their businesses here, anticipating the growth and the opportunities that Louisville had in front of it, and we watched many of those go away. Property owners and their families in some cases put their plans on hold as they found their land values plummet while they endured this process. The most obvious casualty was the Brock Conrad family, which I have given you guys a copy of a letter from Mr. Conrad in the past, and, but several others have come forward to state the impact of the limited opportunities for their land and the effect it would have on future generations for their families. So it was an unfortunate path that we had to take, but it had to be done, and that was the cost. In contrast, I go back to look at the early excitement surrounding the vision and formation of Louisville, creating the downtown master plan, assembling the land and building the town square and the blooming personality of the town. Excitement was truly in the air. A developer brought us the Louisville Food Project at the eastern end of town, and large plans were discussed and made on what the town would become. The town square, the great wagon road, the new public library, a vision for a future at the time, town hall, which we're all standing in now, are great things that we saw on the horizon. It was a bus, we had a vision of a bustling town core, all while preserving the small-town feel. And with it, people, people who would live here and love what we all had created. I miss those days. The important thing is that we're here again tonight. Measures taken by Louisville did get us a seat at the table. Measures did give the town enough time to get these agreements and ordinances in place to manage good growth. The time, while way too long it seems, was used by our leadership of the town to get us back where we are here today. The new language in the LRO as revised is an important signal to the community, businesses, and surrounding population that Louisville is again ready to grow and become the town we envisioned twenty-plus years ago, and have pursued relentlessly in this last seven years to get us back to where we are tonight. So I support your approval of the new LRO language, great job in getting us, getting us back here. Let's resume the earlier promise and progress and look for good things to appear on the horizon for Louisville. Thanks very much.
Thank you. We did give you some latitude on the time.
Did you?
Sort of like that. Just seeing your tax bill.
Can you debit me?
Anyone else like to address council at this time?
I am Tom Lawson, three fifty-six Louisville Trails Road here in Louisville, and it's a little unusual for me to be on this side of the microphone. I'm here tonight to speak for a number of the people that you don't see in the room. I had the distinct pleasure of being the mayor when the original LRO was passed, and as some of you might recall, we had several packed houses of people who were highly insistent that we put up a, some defensive measures. that we put up some defensive measures to prohibit what may occur in areas outside of our jurisdiction in the event we did not get a handle on how utilities were extended. So we moved forward at that time with the LRO as you now have it prior to proposed revision. And we moved forward on a path to restrict the growth of pack plants and to restrict the extension of all public water and sewer into, through, or out of the town Louisville. I'm sure some of you can remember some of the conflicts that resulted in that. But quite frankly, we were at a point in time when we really couldn't gain any traction to move forward in any sort of proactive method. So Tom Waldrup is an individual a number of you are familiar with, who was one of the leaders of the group of citizens that were here in support of the previous LRO seven years ago. This ordinance, the proposed ordinance, came out of the Sewer Committee, which Jeff and I with the council represented at that time. So that has been the first time in a long time I've worked on a piece of ordinance. And so I've continued to kind of take some ownership in that. I talked with Dan at the time. We met with Tom Waldrup and some of his folks ahead of the Sewer Committee proposing this, have kept them in the loop throughout. The public hearing for the planning board had no comment for it. I did meet with Tom two weeks ago on Saturday, showed him the proposed revised draft, made sure that that got distributed through him to people in his community and people who were part of his group. He has, could not be here tonight, but he said that everyone is on board with this, that he's spoken to, which is why you see no one here tonight from that group. And from a planning and zoning standpoint, it's, I feel it's a good thing if you can get an ordinance to this point and not have a room full of people, because when people don't like something, they surely show up, as we all know. I think that this ordinance, Marty's done a great job working through this. Planning Board had a lot of good questions. Utilities Commission had input on it. And I think we are now, as we've done, we've rescinded our ordinance which prohibits public water and sewer because we feel we're now to a point where we can move proactively. We always tried to, or had a number of discussions in the early 2000s about, how can we get to a place where we don't just have conventional one-acre lots as far as the eye can see, but also where we don't get RS9 and condominiums as far as the eye can see outside of our jurisdiction? I think we're gratified that we seem to be moving forward now and forging some better relationships and getting to this day. So that is the latest input that I had gotten from them. I think that the ordinance is something that maximizes our opportunity while retaining our final right of refusal. Because let's be honest, in the future, when we start extending off of the pump station we invested in and as water and sewer start moving forward, I think that it's going to be, you know, all of those projects, regardless of whether it's public, private, whatever situation comes forward, will need to go through and we've managed to retain where unless the town council ultimately approves it, as several petitioners along Shallowford Road will tell you, just having an ordinance doesn't guarantee that you will satisfy the requirements of this council. I think that's important to retain. So those are my comments. I appreciate your time, and it was nice to see everyone again tonight.
Thank you, Tom. Were you lenient there also?
Thank you.
Anyone else that would like to address council at this time on this particular ordinance? Pro or con? Okay, that being the note takers, we will close the public hearing and go to council discussion. I think that it's no doubt, maybe just speaking for myself at this point, that the ordinance was, and we were in need of an ordinance as such as that some seven years ago. I guess it played a significant role in our land use planning at that point in time. Unfortunately, like everything, you know, there was a creation of some unintended consequences that needed to be addressed, and I think this revision certainly has addressed that. I think the revision will serve us well. I've heard from some of our members though, that there's, in the package plan provision in the ordinance as where there are allowed, there's been some, it's problematic to some. I think in talking to some of you that voiced that to me and recently as today, I think that we need some further consideration of that particular provision. And I think if I've heard from those of you at this point in time that don't want to say absolutely no, don't want to say absolutely yes to package plans, but you want them to be considered. And one method that has come forward would be to, we have in place now a Louisville Utilities Committee. And the thought would be that it would be appropriate as a revision to the proposal that we have before us, that package plans be considered by that with certain criteria and standards by that committee in saying. So I think that's a step in the right direction. I think that with proper identification of what council wants to come out of that in the weight of a product we could grant to our manager and staff to come up with the wording on that, certainly working with our attorney. So that's kind of an opener for, for the suggestion. But I think that's at least my take on it right now. Other comments?
Well, let me jump in.
Yes, please do.
First off, you know, one of the great things, sitting, bussing up here as we always have the last word after public hearings. Lang, I appreciate your interest and concern in the town and certainly all the things that you're trying to do and explaining the positions of the town and our rationale for taking the actions that we've taken over the last few years. I think the question though, I would answer is when your consultant friend from New York or Chicago or wherever you came from asks the question, "What's going on in Louisville?", the answer should then be, "We're preserving our options." Because at that particular point in time, we were all sensitive to the fact that without some type of measure of control, we would lose the ability to achieve the goals set forth in our comprehensive plan, which is to preserve the rural character and natural surroundings of Louisville. Clemens lost their option a long time ago. And so I don't look back on these last seven years as opportunities lost. I look back on these last seven years as options and opportunities preserved. So please pass that on to your consultant friend, that we're in exactly the right position we want to be in.
We had the opportunity to do that.
Good, that was good. I think, and I'm the one that raised this issue at our briefing. I think the historically extended position of the town that we were not supported of package plans, I think for the reasons that we identified already, that with package plans comes growth that we can't control, placing burdens on our existing infrastructure for which the rest of the taxpayers in Louisville have to support. So when we began to move away from that position, I asked the question, "Why have we reconsidered that position?" And the answer that I think we arrived at was that we do want to encourage growth in Louisville now. And that makes all the sense in the world of broader tax base and even those resources for the towns and the enrichment enjoyment of our community. The question I had about package plans though, that concerned me most, that we can address tonight a little bit, is if you have somebody who invests a significant amount of money in a package plant, we are going to require them at some point in the future to connect to public sewer, should it arrive at an appropriate connection point. That's why we're asking for the infrastructure and PRDs to be developed to meet CCUC standards. How does that, how does that developer or owner of the package plant recover their costs? I think it puts us in a position of high vulnerability that if we have a package plant investment and at some point in the future we extend the lines of sewer, they connect by it because they're forced to, and that's the agreement, that we're in a position to be sued friendly so that the operator of that system can recover their investment costs. And I think that's fair, because I think it's, if we are encouraging package plans now, then we need to figure out a way to protect that investment, protect the town from future liability. Okay, does that make sense, Bo? So one of the ways to probably attack this is to think very carefully about our Utilities Commission, our Water and Sewer Commission. I'm not sure if we have the exact name for it yet, but obviously it is, it acted as quickly as we can. But in that process, there has to be some kind of acknowledgement by developers that any investment in the package plant may result in a somewhat tenuous situation should public sewer run by the neighbors. So that's the balance that we have to address. Now, Bo, that's a challenge for, I think, for you in this newly formed committee to figure out how through ordinance or certainly through process that we protect the town, but we also, we also protect, you know, people who are going to invest in our town. So I think that's why I want to support some type of movement in this direction, that not only would a site plan go through the planning board for review, but the site plan would then also go through whatever our Utilities or Water and Sewer Committee is defined as for their review and input. So arriving at the endpoint, the town knows what to expect, the developer knows what to expect, CCUC knows what to expect, and we have a predictable path that everybody understands that when sewer is available, it will connect, it will connect by ordinance to the system itself. So that was where, now, does that protect us? I don't know if it protects us, but it gives us a, it gives us an opportunity to put all the cards on the table so that everybody knows, you know, to extend the metaphor, what hand we've been dealt.
Thank you, Mike.
I would, yes, I'm sorry.
Joe?
Yeah, I would say, I think this is even one, just one step further. You know, we're in the infancy of this relationship with CCUC. And I think one of the things that the Utility Commission will need to determine is, you know, what are their criteria and where do they see expansion first? And, you know, lots of times development is the stimulus or the catalyst for the extension of a pipe because it creates new customers. And so I think that in addition to, you know, I think that that really will weigh on our, on our decisions on package plants. It may be, you know, we've got, what, seven basins? It may be after we talk with CCUC that, you know, six basins, okay? Seventh one, no, because they're designing, you know, they're thinking that's where they're going first or whatever. But we need to get all of our, I almost feel like we're a little bit ahead. I mean, I like the bill, but I think on the package plant stuff, we're still a little bit ahead. And we need to, I don't think it'll take a long time, but we got to nail some stuff down with CCUC on how they determine where they want to go, what are their thoughts about where they're going to go, how will they respond to some development coming down the road? Where would be their priority in terms of basin and so on and so forth? And so I agree that it needs to go through there. I think that the package plant section that we really need, that's got to be the first thing this Utilities Commission needs to get on is how are we going to deal with, that's the one thing that has changed in seven years, is it did get us a seat at the table, and now we're there. But I feel like we've been invited to the party and we're all sitting there and we don't know how to act. You know, it's our first, it's our first dance. And so anyway, I think that that's.
But Jeff, I think to use the example that we're talking about is, and there's no, there's no one specific development that comes to mind, but if we have an opportunity where somebody comes in with a fully acceptable and preferable PRD, and we look at it and we say, "This is great. It's going to require some type of infrastructure, whether it's a package plant or something because of the density allowances we do." At that point, there should be a discussion about, do we want a package plant or do we want a lift station? And if we want a lift station, then how do we work together with CCCUC, with the developer, with the town to get pipe to that point? Now, I'm not a big proponent of, of, of package plants. And for the last 17 years, you guys have heard me talk about that. But at least this provides an option for a developer to know that he may be able to participate in a project to bring sewer lines to his development. And frankly, a lift station is probably a whole lot less expensive to build than a package plant, and certainly a whole lot less expensive to operate. So that's, that's the goal we want to try to devote.
Agreed. And I guess my point is is that if we talk to CCUC, they may say, "Well, we've been talking about this, and our priority is going to be to get here." And this is, and so obviously, if that's their priority and they're working on it, that may strike some area where we go, "You know what? No package plant, we want to work with these guys." You know what I mean? And so that's all I'm saying, is we need to sort that out with them so that we're not, it's taken a long time, you guys, to get this seat hooked or not.
That's a technical expression that we use, right? Very technical. Any, any comments, council?
Yeah, let me ask just a fundamental question. The last sentence in section 13 that Marty covered says, "All lands within the Louisville Rule Overlay LRO area shall be eligible to receive both water and sewer services if the owner chooses to be annexed into the town of Louisville." Would I be correct in saying that we've got to have our services agreement complete before we can be able to honor that?
Bo, you'll say?
Well, first, I guess that provision deals with the comprehensive plan provisions. It's not itself ordinance and doesn't, in other words, that promise is not within ordinance yet. It's just something we're adding to the comprehensive plan that we may want to consider added to ordinance at the appropriate time. And so I think this is a kind of a forward-looking provision.
Part, part of our vision.
Yes, sir.
I mean, the goal was any development that occurs in the LRO, we so we want to have it annexed into the town. And that's, that's, otherwise the development doesn't help our, our taxpayers. And I would be voluntary and social, by the way.
Mr. Mayor, one, one point of clarification. We did have a previous, at least a previous draft of this ordinance, the provision that Mr. Moore referenced about requiring connection to sewer. And this draft does not contain the requirement to connect to sewer. Now, whether, whether as a result of this discussion, that provision changes, I don't know. But I just wanted to clarify that we don't, under, at least under this draft, and we don't have a provision requiring connection to sewer.
Well, I think one of the considerations that I've thought about is that, and Jeff, you're speaking of, you know, the long-range plan for the actual complete sewer coverage for Louisville. That, that is very long-range, but certainly to implement that. I think though, that we, we do want to encourage development, that we all agree to that. And there may be some areas within our boundaries that it's going to be years and years before there is actually the lines run from, from the current collection points out to those. And I think the consideration going through the Louisville Utilities Commission as to whether to or not to recommend approval to this, this council or to the council that's sitting at the time would be, would take that into consideration as to how long it would be before sewer could be available from a public standpoint. And I, I think if, if we defer to, to the staff and to our attorney to incorporate language into that particular section or provision on a package plant as to whether, they will certainly be considered. And there'll be certain criteria that'll be considered by. And that's probably something that we need to develop and have input into. One, let the staff take their stab at it first, and then it would be, of course, nothing's going to be approved till, till we approve it. But I think, I think we can do that in short order, really. And when I say short order, I'd like to see something by our briefing coming up in April, along with a slightly starting point for that. And I would propose then that we delay action on the LRO until that point in time. Not saying that we'll take action on that particular date, April 3rd, but that would give us an opportunity to see what we could utilize either yay or nay to package plants, what criteria. what criteria it'd be judged by, and then what the recommendation, you know, ultimately would come from the, the committee or to study just these type of things.
Should we just defer it to the committee and get that thing going?
That's what I'm saying.
Okay. All right. So that committee, I think we need to get some appointments, we need a charter, we need.
Well, no, no, wait just a minute. That's, that wasn't what I was saying.
I'm just asking.
I'm saying, one, let's, let's get basically the directive to that committee that we're comfortable with on this particular provision and have that well underway by April the 3rd or that hopefully soon after, we can take that and actually approve for our turn down this revision to the LRO. But I think it gives us something to go by. Is that, is that clear or not?
I think that a lot of this is going to be, be left to some staff and attorney work on homework to see what provision is, is again, that will work and how it will fit. And then I think that's probably the best way we could proceed with the.
That's my exact opinion. That we'd lay any actions until that is accomplished and that the council is comfortable with it.
Okay. Yeah, you had just mentioned something about the committee, but I think that.
Oh, Jeff mentioned something about the committee and I agree, but I misunderstood what he was saying.
Okay.
I guess, I guess one of the concerns is that we're gonna, we're gonna pass something that's going to immediately need the utilities commission and we don't have it set up. And we did, we, I think I was appointed to it and Hank is on it and Mike Quester is on it and we haven't done a thing. And so I guess my point is, is we passed this, game on, we need to be ready. So that's, that's what my point is instead.
Not before we have the wording corrected.
I think that to move too quickly is, is presuming something is going to happen with the committee and, and structure. So I think we've got some research to do on the backside to see how to best incorporate the committee if that's.
The desire of the town.
I'm not sure why these can't move on their old drives.
I agree. I think that in most respects, I sort of think they could. You got your brain in it.
I think so.
These things don't look good.
And I'd like to make a motion that we can continue the public hearing on the LRO.
I believe Dan had made a motion to delay action on this until the April meeting.
Does that, okay, where I was coming from, if we continue the public hearing, then we don't have to go through the process of advertising it again.
And I, I think.
Do the same thing by just delaying.
Yes, I mean, the public hearing has been opened, the actual public portion of that has been completed, the whole process is not done. So I think the mayor had made a motion to delay our further, your further consideration of this ordinance until the April briefing time.
Yeah, I guess where.
Which will not require another advertisement.
Yeah, where I was coming from, I guess, as long as we accomplish this, if we're gonna, gonna be working with some additional language, I'd like to keep the public hearing open for anybody who might want to add comments at that time rather than just the council's discussion.
I think council could certainly, someone could move to reopen it.
The public hearing is closed. The public hearing is closed.
I think councils will, would be allowed if they ask if there were a motion to reopen the public hearing.
My only point there is, Lynn, we're gonna add some language, but there's that likely opportunity for the public to be able to put their thoughts in the public hearing rather than say, okay, we've got to schedule another public hearing or give them the three minutes of the public forum, which I'm not sure is the right place where we're willing to make comments. Something similar. Anybody with anything?
I think we can reopen. You're at our discretion, Ken.
Yes, sir, and you have, and you have done that. This council has done that in the past and we had discussion and further matters were brought into consideration and exactly the concern that Mr. Horn notes, you know, it doesn't seem fair not to allow the public to have further input when we've introduced something that wasn't something they could have known about at the time that they originally had the opportunity to speak.
A little of that opportunity exists without us having to go through the process of advertising it open, open the hearing.
Your hearing's been duly advertised for tonight. Those persons who are wanting to be present have the opportunity to be here tonight and hear that this hearing is being, theoretically, and we have motions pending right now to continue the hearing until the April 3 briefing session. And what happens there, they will have an opportunity to, to come and hear and see what happens then.
So you're saying that the motion is in order?
It's actually been made, the mayor made the motion. Frankly, I guess I was not acting appropriately in saying nothing else is appropriate until there's either a second or not a second to the mayor's motion, but he has a motion that is pending, we've had discussion, but we should have waited for the second. But where we are now is the mayor has a motion to delay further hearing until the April briefing.
With the provision that the public will be able to speak at that time.
And the briefing?
No.
Or the next.
Yeah, we won't take action on this at the briefing, we'll take action on the next meeting.
That's fine. I'll, I'll get that motion.
I'm sorry.
Any further discussion?
Just the one final point. If we, if we're in the process of saying to a developer, you must build your infrastructure to the standards of the CCUC, we are doing that because at some point, we're considering attaching that infrastructure to a public sewer system. So in the direction to, I guess, the staff lets, that provision doesn't exist now in the LRO, as it's written, that changes the tool or the additions you're going to be talking about, I'd like to see that as part of it, to require, require connection of any PRD infrastructure that's built to sewer when it becomes available, that subdivision.
That may be appropriate for council's discussion when we figure out what it is we want to do completely. I believe that was discussed.
Pardon?
There is no provision, as I understand, in this draft, and we can't compel CCUC to make them hook on that, under our interlocal agreement with CCUC, they'll make the decision about where and when they'll, where they'll go. I think that may have been the reason why this required connection, and even at the town's election, the town doesn't make the decision, CCUC makes the, the decision in accordance with whatever their, their policies are. I think what, what, while we maintain the requirement that even package plants be built to the standards of CCUC was, in the event that there's a failure, as we've seen in the past, we want to make sure that all that would be required would be for CCUC to run the line out there for them to connect to, and then they would be covered. But we, with the interlocal agreement that we're almost ready to go with, with CCUC, it, CCUC maintains its policies with regard to where and when it goes and how far it extends and to whom it connects, with whom it connects, and not the town. So we, we really have a hard time putting in a provision, I think, in this ordinance that says, when the town says so, you'll connect, because that's not the case.
Well, it's not actually when the town says so, it's when CCUC has made provisions to provide access to that system.
And then.
And if CCUC says to connect.
CCUC standards, I thought that was in, I thought that wording was in there.
Yes, sir, the CC, building to CCUC standards is in there. What is not in there is the requirement to connect.
I think as we discussed earlier, the, the provision for the standard is removing a roadblock in the future to give somebody the ability to connect their, their sewer system to CCUC if the, the situation should mandate it. But from my conversations with them, they, again, this is not something that CCUC is into. They, their preferred situation is not to take over systems, but they will do so when the situation presents itself and there's a compelling reason to do so. Certainly, the provision that is within the, the LRO for the sewer lines to be built to CCUC standards just goes a little bit further to prevent someone in the future, namely the customers being served by the sewer system, to be saddled with one more obstacle to deal with lines that are not up to CCUC standard.
You made the statement that CCUC doesn't want to take over a system. What do you, what constitutes a system in your mind?
It's not that they don't want to take over systems, but they are not, their, their thought here is not that they are looking for opportunities to take on. They will, on a case by case basis, when the situation warrants it, consider a system for taking over.
What constitutes a system in your, in your definition?
The, the collection system.
Okay, not the package plant.
No, sir, the, the CCUC has been quite clear, they will not take on a package plant.
I guess I would take it a step further. Are we, are we speaking to the CCUC presumably that they would not want to connect to a system that is going to generate positive revenue for the CCUC by already having the infrastructure in place and the homes connected, that by running a sewer line, they connect to that revenue?
I don't think that we're in a position to speak for CCUC in that regard.
Exactly, Michael. So I'm not sure that we can presume that they don't want to take, take over systems.
And I think, I think that's accurate. I mean, in the situation you described it, I think CCUC would very likely want to, want to connect on. The only thing that I was talking about was our ordinance standards shouldn't be talking about required connections because that's not our call to make.
This, this really goes to my point, that we are starting a brand new relationship here and we just don't know the boundaries yet. That's why I really think that, and that's gonna be the first task of that commission is to figure a bunch of this stuff out. We don't understand how they operate, we don't know what their criteria are for expansion, we don't know what their vision is, we don't know, you know, and so it's just gonna be a critical component. I mean, we can learn that fast.
I agree.
Any further discussion? Got a motion and a second? Do we need to restate the motion or the second?
Yeah.
All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay. Is that quasi-clear, Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir.
We're asking the staff and at least five, like, the 3rd of April.
Yes.
Okay, very good. We'll go to the next item.
Okay, the next section is unfinished business, there is none consideration this evening. Moving on to the next section for new business, we have section A, which is a two-parter. It deals with MSD Storm Drain Improvements for Fowlworth Drive. The first is ordinance 2014014, amending budget ordinance 2013013 in an amount of $22,446 to make storm drain improvements to the outlet pipe under Fowlworth Drive.
Of course, this falls within the MSD and its, its budgets and resources.
Yes, sir, this comes between MSD funds that will be amended to, to pay for this.
Any questions of the manager? We're taking a motion. Have a second. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, the ordinance passes.
The second is resolution 2014015, authorizing the town manager to award the contract to Russell Construction Company of advance in an amount not to exceed $22,246. This, of course, is a companion to the first ordinance that was passed.
With the pleasure of council with this resolution?
Motion approved.
Second. Any further questions? Or comments? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, resolution passes. Okay. Next order of business is the second opportunity for the public to comment to council. Rules are the same as the previous public comment section. Forward, state your name and address and limit your comments to three minutes. Anyone wish to address council at this time? And the notetakers, we'll close the public comments section and remind the public that there are forums available for written comments. That brings us to council comments for tonight's session. Anyone have anything else to say?
Of course. I want to be sure we're clear on our directive regarding the, pretty proper charter of the, whatever, what is our official name, Jeff?
I think it's the Louisville Utilities Commission.
Louisville Utilities Commission, we're moving forward to have something that's available on that as well.
In our, in our minutes, it was services and utilities.
Oh, services and utilities, so, sorry.
Services and utilities, maybe it's what you're approving on this.
All right. Well, that's a better title to begin this. Or a cobbie. Okay. Any other comments, questions? Okay. Well, one, we're certainly going to thank Commissioner Baker for staying with us tonight to the, to the bitter end.
Making sauce, it's fun.
Well, you've gone through these many times, I'm sure, both as your position in Tobacco Vale and certainly on the, the board commissioners or the county. So, I know it's, no stranger to you, this is Martin. But thank you for coming, we appreciate that. Entertaining a motion for adjournment. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? We are adjourned.